We will now convene our regular study session for October the 21st. All members of our council are present. First item on our agenda is a presentation on public safety funding. Forward, we've been all looking forward to getting this important update.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Samuel Schultz. I am the Deputy Director for the Office of Management and Budget. To my left here is Dan Butler, Assistant Police Chief, and then Corey Hayes, Assistant Fire Chief. Today, we're going to be talking about public safety funding. And what we're going to be looking into is what the city has been doing since the passage of, and the approval of the Public Safety Sales Tax in 2018. What we want to express is the commitment that the city has been putting towards public safety, as well as the priority that the city puts forward for that. Just as a recap for public safety today for police and fire, the main funding sources are the general fund, the two voter-approved sales tax, which is going to be the Quality of Life Sales Tax, as well as the Public Safety Sales Tax, the recent bonds, the 2013 Public Safety Bond, which we did for about 51 million, and then the 2018 bond, which we did for about 84 million. And then other funds and grants as they come through the city. So to give a little breakdown of the FIRE FTE, in 2018-19, when we did the Public Safety Sales Tax, when we looked at the forecast, what the city was looking to implement was about 45 FTEs at that time, when we presented that to council. For those positions, what was included, and that was Station 221, which went along with the bond, as well as Station 222. Other positions included in there were civilian additional support and additional unit support for response time. The next graph, what we're showing here, is kind of the commitment that the city has done, and kind of the flexibility that the city looks at when we review this plan each year. So what you'll see is a cumulative total of the FTEs here. So that 2019 forecast is that 45 positions that the city committed with that city sales tax. Come to the 2020 forecast, we're looking at a cumulative total of FT of 55. And then the 22 forecast, this was the most recent fiscal year 21-22 adopted budget, the Public Safety Sales Tax was committed to 57 positions. Currently with the sales tax today, what we're looking at the current forecast is then increasing that further and looking for additional 24 positions added to that cumulative total.
So Mayor, Council, just real quicky, when we say forecast, that's not in one year, right? That's usually about a five-year period, Sam, is typically what we talk about. So when we first came to the voters with the Public Safety Sales Tax, we said, you know, over the next five years, we think we'll be able to hire about 45. You saw the split between sworn and civilian. And obviously, what's happened, and we've seen it in the general fund, the improvement in the collection of sales tax. So as a result of, not only the general fund has benefited from the improvement in the economy, but obviously, good timing, Public Safety Sales Tax, that growth in the economy is reflected in additional collections, not only in the current years, but also as we look out into our forecast for the sales tax, it certainly has improved, which has allowed us, we've come to council now two other times, as we've brought to you subsequent budgets and forecasts, and said, you know, that 45, we believe, you know, in 2020, we said, based on the improvement of the economy, we're going to budget for 10 more positions. And then in the 22, most recently, said, you know, the economy, we think the economy's even doing a little bit better, let's add to additional in the forecast, not in that particular, that specific year necessarily, although we have accelerated the hiring also. And then when we get to that last one, we're kind of giving you a preview of the forecast we would give to you in February, March, when we'd usually do that, Sam, the next update forecasted.
The update would be in that January, February type.
So just based on what we're currently seeing, and we want to be careful to suggest the 24, but we think what we're seeing currently, assuming the, everything holds, out of the end of that forecast, that five years, we think that it looks like we'll be in a position where we could add another 24 sworn positions. So that's, I don't want it to think of it as a particular year, but it's the beginning of a year for the five-year forecast. So it's kind of a rolling period of time, but it's also, we're doing that as Sam and Chris look at the forecast and the performance of our economy and the sales tax, this is what we believe could be sustained, supported by the sales tax through the forecast period, if that makes sense.
Question on that, is, what's the allocation for police and fire from there?
Oh, so when we first set it up, it was about 40-60, 40% of the sales tax goes to fire and 60% goes to PD.
But these numbers are all fire.
Oh, right, right now, we're only talking about fire. We'll get to the PD here in a second, yes.
Mr. Luna.
Chris, so, which is great, you know, we've got potentially 24, within five years, we're looking at 23 to 28 years. If our economy continues to improve, would we look at hiring additional fire personnel?
Well, I think, like you see, even in this, these charts, right, every year, as we define the forecast and we look at the update, the revenues and what we think is going in, and remember, each time we do the forecast, we go one more year out, right? So I think every year we'll do this, right? And so I think what we wanted to share with council is that the performance of the economy is doing so well, that we have been able to make a tremendous amount of, we've been able to add a tremendous amount more positions, and to the point where we believe we're, we still need to give us a few more months of performance, right, going into this next year, that one of the things, and you're going to see this a little bit later, that 24 is equivalent to being able to support two new fire stations. Now, usually, we're pretty good about going to the bond, to the public to vote on new fire stations, but then you're always like, yeah, but where are we going to get the bodies? The sales tax, really because of its supplementing the general fund, and because of the performance of the economy, what we're saying to the council is, and I'm jumping ahead here, but you guys are, you guys aren't going to let me wait, but the 24 would suggest that maybe we ought to start talking about the idea of a year from this November, the thought is we want to start discussing the possibility of another Public Safety Bond program, where we could include, at a minimum, some additional fire stations, if we think we're going to have the funding from Public Safety Sales Tax to support two additional fire stations, again, in the forecast period, so they would be further out, they would be maybe four to five years out from where we are today, but that's kind of the planning we always have to do. We have to do, you know, we have to wait a year to do the bond election, that usually is January, and then we have to go through land act, to find out where we're going to put them, and cite the land and all, and build it, and so it takes time. And we're still just finishing up 221, right, should be opening soon, and 222 is under design, and we're working on that. So it seems to make sense, because then we would just keep continuing to add fire stations every couple of years, which with our growth, and even, you know, for some areas of our city, we see the calls for service continue to grow, and that's putting quite a bit of pressure on existing stations, and so thus, we just wanted to kind of start presenting these ideas as we update this, this was kind of one of the things that we came to conclusions. We believe it looks like, again, it's all based on the performance of the economy, but we need to start planning now, or you need to start thinking about putting in place the opportunities to make that happen.
I'm glad you mentioned the public safety facilities, because as I look at this growth and based on the two new ones that we're going to get in District 6 and in my district, whether we had sufficient space for the new personnel coming through, so we are forecasting, we may look at having a bond package for additional public safety facilities in and around Mesa, depending on where we at in terms of growth.
Yeah, I think the message here is, we believe, based on current forecasting that need to be updated, that it looks like out into the future, that we would have sufficient funding from the Public Safety Sales Tax to support two new future fire stations.
Thank you, Chris. So of the 36 additional employees above and beyond the original projections, 24 would be sworn and 12 would be non-sworn?
So it will be a mix of things, and we'll go through the next two slides of what would create those 81 positions as a whole. These are just forecasts of the cumulative, so plans have changed through the fiscal years, so what was the plan in 2019, that mix of positions is a little bit different of where we are today.
Why don't you go to the next slide, Sam, that's a good one. Mayor, it's a combination of, remember, we have fire and medical, so we, and every time we add the medical, it also helps with the fire response, so we kind of mix those up a little bit.
So on this slide, what we're showing here is the 45 of the fiscal year 21-22 adopted budget, the 45 FTEs that we have implemented in the budget today. So what this includes is 16 FTEs for two MR or medical response units for those 16 FTEs, eight additional FTEs to cover quarterly training and weekend support, the 12 FTEs, which are sworn as well for the Station 221, that will be coming online here soon, six new FTEs for the Battalion Center, and then we have a couple other public safety support positions. So the current mix and what we're looking at for fire is, the majority of the positions are sworn, and there's, right now, in the sales tax, there's two civilian positions. And those civilian positions are for staffing, as well for the drug distribution between the fire stations that we talked about during the 21-22 adopted budget. So with the Public Safety Sales Tax, the city has been implementing those new positions, but not only has the city been employing positions with Public Safety Sales Tax, the city has also been adding additional funding and support through the general fund and other funds. So on this slide, we're showing the current implementation of the positions since 1920, of what we have been doing through the general fund and other funds. So we have added 14 additional sworn FTEs for better coverage of overtime and response support, and then 8.5 FTEs for general administrative things, whether it's IT, staffing, and so forth. And then, as you all are aware, we also have been working on the implementation and bringing over the ambulance transport program, which has created a more coordinated and effective medical response for the city.
Corey, maybe you could just spin, Chief Hayes, could you just go a little bit more into, that's a big number, that 70, just talk about, you know, again, just reminding the council, why we've moved into that area of service, and how that's really benefited the entire fire system.
Absolutely. Mayor, Council, we've been before you several times, talking about the value that we saw in taking our transportation model in-house within the fire department, and it's, we're seeing it come to fruition. We've seen a more streamlined response from our crews, we've seen a better transition of care, and certainly, a big benefit to our patients, because we are trained at the same level across the system. It has made a significant impact in the relationship between our crews, the ability to work together, the ability to train together. So it's been a really great addition to the fire and medical department. We think that it's been a significant improvement to care for our citizens, which is always our number-one priority, to make sure that we're providing the highest level of care to our customers in Mesa. So the model, obviously, we're still in the growing phase of this, but it has gone exceptionally well. We've gotten great support, and feel like that we're moving in a really strong direction for the citizens.
Thank you, Corey. And Mayor and Council, again, that's 70 is a kind of a, it's an enterprise in itself, in the sense that it includes the, you know, emergency medical technicians, the EMTs and paramedics, but also includes the administrative support, because we're doing the billing for those services, right, and helping support all that activity. So it doesn't, there's still general fund support subsidy to this program, but it does do a good, pretty good job of also collecting, reimbursing the fees that are associated with this cost, as we collect it from insurance and things like that. But it's still a general fund support to get that done.
Ms. Dove.
I have a quick question. On the ambulance program, is it housed at the fire station, or is it housed at separate facilities?
It's spread across the entire city, so most of our fire stations are obviously strategically located in neighborhoods, so that we have a quick response, and the ambulances have a similar response time expectation. It's a little bit greater than the, our larger apparatus, but yes, they are at fire stations. We have two units housed right here at Fire Administration in the old Fire Station 201, but the rest of them are housed at fire stations across the city.
At the stations, okay, thank you.
I think to add to that note, a number of years ago, the city planned on having ambulances strategically positioned in the city. So when we built our fire stations years ago, this is what was anticipated, and it's probably been 15, 18 years ago, when we built stations, so this is a good outcome for having strategically placed the ambulance service within our firehouses, because that provides continuity and oversight by the fire captains and battalion chiefs. I've had a question on battalion, six FTEs for a new battalion, do we have a battalion four now?
We do, yes, sir. Battalion 24 went in service last year. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
I have a question, before we get too far down the road here, so I don't lose track. It seems like that we have different buckets, because obviously, we need to hire new firefighters every year, just because of attrition, and to maintain the current force. And it seems like we had, over the last few years, acknowledging the growth of our community, said we need to, that's not good enough, we need to add new firefighters. So under the, that's the slide, I think, that's up right now, we're going to get, before the Public Safety Sales Tax, we were committed to this, 14 new sworn, eight and a half non-sworn, and then the creation of the ambulance program, 70 FTEs. And that was all prior to this Public Safety Sales Tax. Public Safety Sales Tax then passes, and we make commitments to the voters, we're going to do 45 FTEs. We now have increased, because of the strength of the sales tax and the economy, we're upping that substantially. So am I, am I following correctly?
So Mayor, let's do, if you don't mind, let's.
Because that's a lot of numbers to add together, because we're going to get to a really big number.
We are, so let's get you there, let's start, go back to five, slide five. So slide five is that progressive number, right, as we continue to update the forecast, and we keep saying that, you know, 45 goes to 55, 55 goes to 57, right, in year 2022, right? And then what we're saying in the current updated forecast, we believe there's another 24 positions that eventually could be added. So that 45, that we go clear back to the beginning of 2019, we believe now, through the forecast period, could be 81. All right, now, if we could, let's go to slide, to your big rollout number, Mayor, slide eight. So now you see that 81, that would be, and again, these are still positions that would be hired out into the future, but they're still being supported by the Public Safety Sales Tax. So that number is now 81, going back to that slide we just saw. And now, if you include, since, we're not, this is only since a Public Safety Sales Tax was implemented, the general fund and other funds have also increased the number of positions to 92 and a half. The point there being is, the general fund didn't step back and just say, hey, we're just going to let the Public Safety Sales Tax take on all the obligations of public safety. It's also made a significant commitment. So now you see that almost 174 positions that have been added, filled, budgeted, there was some, we were working with the fire departments on what we call unfunded, or unbudgeted or unfunded?
Unbudgeted, yes.
Unbudgeted positions, though, have been fully budgeted, the staffing is now in our authorized positions, and that's where you get the 173 positions.
Okay, thank you, that, I think, was what I was trying to get at, but that, those are new FTEs in addition to just the static force.
Yes, oh, yes, since the beginning, going back to 19.
Yeah, Mayor, yes, it is not, that, those positions are not inclusive of attrition positions, I think is what you're asking. No, we are replacing attrition positions. As somebody retires, we hire and replace them, that's not a new position number, that is not part of these numbers at all.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Mr. Luna.
So Mr. Brady, the Public Safety Sales Tax, is that something that runs in perpetuity?
Yes, it is.
As well as Quality of Life Tax, which we approved in 1998, which supports our, I think, our police personnel.
Correct. And that's why we feel comfortable giving those projections of the forecast in the 24.
Okay.
Yes. But we have to be careful, because we, you know, we want, we are also purchasing things, and you'll see a list of one-time purchases, so we're trying to balance out in this Public Safety Sales Tax, how much can we pay for that's going to be recurring for the lifetime, you know, in perpetuity of supporting that staff? And we have to think about it as ongoing forever, and then also having an allocation, knowing that we also have radio purchases, facility upgrades, and you'll see, you'll see those lists a little bit later. Go ahead.
So looking at it, so how many actual, how much have you gone up in actual head count? Not through attrition, but in addition to attrition?
So none of this has anything to do with attrition?
Yeah.
So, so we've gone up, ah.
So the 137.5 FTE is what has gone up in FT count since fiscal year 1920. So in the fiscal year 21-22 budget, that would be the growth of the fire department.
But then there's, we anticipate, that's what's been implemented in the current, that you've approved as an adopted budget, we can say is an authorized position. But what we also do is say, we, we're looking out into the future and see additional positions that we believe in future budgets, we can come to council and request. So Sam's saying, what you've approved, what's in the adopted budget, we can say is a 137. But we're also telling you, in a forecast, we think we'll be able to add more to that over the next five years.
So we actually have gone up in head count since the sales tax has been implemented?
Right, I think that's, Sam, that 137.
Correct. On the ambulance program, is the 18 FTEs going to be part of the fire medical, or I know in a previous presentation, they're currently billing under our kind of billing department? Is that, is the idea to move it over to fire, or keep it at billing?
We actually took it from fire and moved it over into administration, so, but they just support the billing side of it.
But, so these 18 FTEs are for the billing department, or?
Well, but for them, we can't bill for the activities of the ambulance service. So there, it's, it's an activity itself, but just the oversight administration of billing and the expertise we have in other department, we've just relocated those individuals into our business services department, but they are supporting the ambulance program. And they are, and they're civilian, but we need to have the civilian administration to do the billings to support the 56 FTEs.
And there are other positions within that 18, it's not just billing, billing's about five billers and supervisor. Other positions include like code compliance, as well as administrative staff and shift supervisors and so forth. So it's a mix of kind of overall, but billing is a bigger part of that piece.
Thank you. Maybe to Kevin's point, have we hired for Station 221 now, and those crews are in the city?
I hope so.
So once the station, so once the station is open.
Better, that's a trick question, be careful.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman.
Maybe explain that, so you'll deploy them to 221.
Yes, we have. The truck has been bid, it's actually running right now out of Station 202, given a little bit of break, but I believe that Chief Lachlan and Chief Camilli have a plan to put that truck over at 221 in the next couple of weeks. It is very close to being.
Yeah, we have a scheduled.
Yeah, so it could be moving as soon as, it might be moving today.
Well, good. I mean, for council's benefit, we hire to be prepared for an opening of the station ahead of time, so that those crews can go right in, go to work.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the city approved a process for us, I don't know, 15 years ago or so. Prior to that, I think what you're remembering is back when we didn't hire till somebody left, and obviously, with a four-month training period to get them on the streets, that had an impact to our overtime budget. So the city approved a process probably 15 years ago, where we pre-hire for those projected vacancies or any new trucks that are coming in service. So yes, those recruits have already been hired for, they're on the streets, and we are ready to put that truck in service, get it out into its area.
We don't like to have brand-new vacant fire stations for very long.
Ten-four. It does not look good.
I think Councilman Thompson would approve of.
And then kind of go into that with 222 and that question, so from the way that we forecast and budget for new fire stations, with the positions, we do bring them on a year early, so when we're looking at Station 222, which was under design and projected to open up in 23-24, from a position standpoint, those are projected to come onboard in 22-23. So in this slide, this is kind of a summary of those remaining 36 positions of the, what is projected into the forecast, so that's going to be the upcoming Station 222 positions, as well as the 24 positions that Chris has talked about. Great, and to summarize, with the FTEs, it's not the only type of support that the city does give, there are other types of projects when it comes to bond and so forth. So what you're seeing on this slide here is a five-year trend, and we're looking at all funding that is directly supporting or indirectly supporting the fire station, so this is going to include capital projects as well, so your bond projects and project management projects, to kind of show you what the change within fire medical's budgeted support has been over the past five years.
So we're transitioning from fire, so go to PD now, okay?
So similar to fire, looking at where we were with the 2018-19 forecast of when we came to council with, where we thought we would implement from a police FTE, in total, we were looking at 65.5 positions into the forecast that the Public Safety Sales Tax would support. As you can see by these numbers, the big thing to take from this is, not only have we increased that position count up to 117, but we have also accelerated the amount of positions that are onboard up to fiscal year 21-22. So that 77 is what we have implemented in the Public Safety Sales Tax in the fiscal year 21-22 budget today.
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to pause for just, just think about what we've done. We've almost, we've added, not just the total number, but how much sooner, and this is where Assistant Chief Butler's been working very hard, right, to process that many more applications and cadets through, but we're not only committed to getting that, to that beyond the 65, but the number sooner to get onto the streets is a huge commitment the police department's been able to step up to, but again, we've been able to adjust because of the better performance of the sales tax, to support that many more, over 50 more officers much earlier in the timeframe than we had originally talked about.
On these figures here, does it include sworn and civilian positions, or both, all positions?
Correct, Mayor, Councilmember, this will include all positions in Public Safety Sales Tax of that mix of sworn and civilian.
I'm not quite sure I understand this slide, did, when we campaigned for the Public Safety Sales Tax, the number of police officer FTE, the police FTEs that we promised the voters was 65.5?
Correct, over the forecast period.
Right, and that sounds right, and we're now, we had already, before today, said, no, that's not enough, we're going to take it to 77?
Yeah, so if you think about that forecast, the original forecast period, well, it said at the end of that period, we'd have 65.5. What Sam's showing you, kind of progressively, as we were going to be hiring during that five-year period, the anticipation was that in that early part of that forecast, 21-22, there would be 23 and a half positions, new positions that would be brought into the police department, and what we're saying is, no, we've actually well-outperformed that, instead of only being 23 and a half by 21-22, the total number of positions sworn, mostly sworn, and you can maybe give the breakout between sworn and non-sworn, but is now 77, and then at the end of the same forecast period, instead of being 65, it'll be 117.
I think I get it now, so now, we're anticipating 117 new FTEs for police, and we've already accomplished 77 of those.
Yes, we're, they're in the various stages of hiring.
A lot of the positions have been filled. I get it, so that's a substantial increase from 65 to 117.
Yeah, and, and again, that, I think the number is big here, but I think, because it's the police department, we're able to bring on much faster, because... it's the police department, we're able to bring on much faster because, you know, the, the capital support that comes with fires may be different than it is with, on PD, right? Does that make sense? And so?
Tahoe's cheaper than a fire station.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, just the balance of what we've chosen here is to accelerate sooner, more sooner in PD. And again, they're all at different levels of, you've heard about doing the three academies in one year, which is unprecedented. And, but then with that, you've seen in the news, we've had to make a big commitment to, an ongoing commitment of improving our training facilities so we could, you know, we can continue to train that many officers. So that's, it's just a little slight difference, but we wanted to make, we think it's significant. It's not only more, but it's more sooner. I don't know if that's right grammar, but it's not. But, but that's what it is.
Communicating.
Sooner. There's more of them.
More sooner is the quote.
Sound like I'm from Oklahoma.
Wow. Good thing certain people aren't in the room. All right. All good news. Keep, oh, yes, Mr. Freeman.
So Chief Butler, are we able to, with the new hiring, are we able to compete or stay up with the attrition of our, of your department? Because you have attrition happening, we have new hires over here happening. So, you know, I hear that, you know, we're having, even though we're able to replace through attrition, where are we at?
So, really, really complex question, and also a pretty simple question. So I'll try to do it as simple as possible.
I should have preempted you on it.
Yeah. No, it's a good one. I kind of expected this one to, to come somewhere along the lines. So we, we talked about forecasting, you know, back in 2014, we started looking at how long our training cycle was to hire a police officer, and it's about a year. And we started, we started projecting about five years, tracking who's going to retire, who's eligible to retire. And then we created a mean for how many people leave our organization through all the various different outcomes on, every year. And in 2014, it was about 17 a year. Well, as the years have gone on, the impact from the late 90s, early 2000s hiring, where we had massive growth in our organization, has made that unanticipated number creep up just a little bit. And it's about 28 now is what we unanticipate, or that leave unanticipatedly every year. So with that forecasting, with that projecting forward, with including what we know is known attrition through our rigorous training process, we come at the city and say, hey, we need about 125 people beyond what our budgeted people are to hire these people a year in advance. So when someone leaves on the street, we have all these people ready to go, walking out, ready to go day one to patrol the streets. Now, the factor that we had in 2020 was something that we have never seen. And that's the factor that's put us in a position that, if you would have asked me a year ago, I would have been, oh, yeah, we're perfect. We're doing great. Our algorithm's working. We have all these people. But in 2020, we had 61 people leave our organization for various reasons, and that impacted our training model. So monthly, I sit down, I meet with my staff, and we look at what our projections are, and we realized, holy cow, this threw our projections way off course. So we adapted our projections. Where we sit right now is, I, I have 41 vacancies in patrol. Chief Westing has 41 vacancies in patrol. They're kind of mine because I'm responsible for bringing people in. But I have 81 people in the pipeline ready to go. And so he's going to get some immediate relief in October as my Class 48 academy graduates, or not graduates, finishes the FTO program. So that will help. And then I have Class 49 about to graduate, and we just started Class 50. And Class 50 started about six weeks ago. So we probably won't be flush where we want to be for a good six, eight months, given that our new projections hold true. And I, I hope they do, because we really need, we, we need our people to stay inside of our organization. And that's what we're seeing is people that are eligible to retire. You know, there's lots of factors going on. There's a booming economy. You know, about a year ago, being police in the media nationwide, not in our community, like I want everybody to understand that. I think you guys hear that. It wasn't great, and our cops didn't feel appreciated. Now, we know that's not true here. You guys have seen the survey that Arizona State University did. Our cops know we're supported. They, they feel it every time they interact with you. They feel it every time that Mr. Brady gives us more people, gives us more facilities, upgrades our facilities. So it's not, it's not the same now. But there's still factors out there that, you know, our cops are moving on to private, private business, because there's lots of opportunity.
Chief, it seems like I've, I've met several lateral hires recently. Is that something you're utilizing to fill in these gaps?
We have done laterals for a long time. We're very particular about how many laterals that we bring into our organization. We have a, a very intense process for evaluating laterals. There's, there's some perceptions, some misconceptions about what a lateral is. What we look for in our laterals are for people looking for opportunity. The words out on Mesa PD, other agencies around are always interested in coming over because we have lots of opportunity. We have growth, we have movement. Our training is second to none. We train far and above, far and above everybody in all aspects of training. And, and some of you have had the opportunity to talk about some of our training with recently. So we do have laterals. In fact, we have five right now that are about to graduate our six-week lateral academy, and then they'll go into our abbreviated field training program. We're constantly looking, constantly evaluating, but that's not the bulk of our hiring process.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Chief. I, I have gone through the simulation. It was amazing. I encourage all of you to do it. I know that Terra Hall and Mini Salas have been real active in recruitment. Has that worked in terms of getting more officers in the Mesa Police Department? How is that going now?
So if you would have asked me eight months ago, if we were experiencing all the problems that you see in the news, that you hear nationwide, I would have said absolutely not. Our recruiting numbers are higher than they've ever been. Since then, our recruiting numbers have dropped. So all of the work that they're doing is incredible work, but now we're looking at new technologies and how we reach out to those places in America where people are moving to Arizona to recruit those, those individuals. Now, what we do have going for us, because everybody that we hire, we survey, is our organizational reputation. So when we put these individuals into the academy or the final interview right before they go to the academy, we talk to them, and we ask, well, what do you like about Mesa? And they talk about, well, your process. You guys treat me like a human being in the process. You treat me like I'm wanted here. And then, what else drew you to Mesa? And they said, oh, well, my so-and-so works with ex-police department in the Phoenix metro area, or my uncle, my brother, my sister, they work here. And they said, go to Mesa, go to Mesa. So that's the strength of the Mesa Police Department in recruiting right now, is we get referrals from our friends in the industry to come to our organization.
Ms. Billingsbury?
I love the story this tells. This is great. Remind me how many total officers we have?
Sure. Right now, allocated officers is 813. So that's sworn police officers that we have positions for. Now, we're a little bit low than that because of attrition that I spoke about, but we have 81 in the pipeline to replace those 41 that are missing in our patrol operations area.
Mr. Thompson?
So going back to Councilmember Freeman's question, so are we just keeping up with attrition? Have we actually gone up in officers on the street? And if not, what are we doing to make sure that we can keep those officers that, you know, go into drop and maybe they don't finish their five years of drop? Or the officers that are deciding to leave for other reasons? How can we keep those until we can ensure that we have enough officers on the street?
So three, I mean, three parts to your question. It's a great question. It's something that we're, we're working, the latter part is something that we're working hard, higher on, or really hard on. So the first part is, are we keeping up? Well, that's scale sliding. We were keeping up, and we were actually projected at the beginning of the year to have more cops than we had funded positions. So we would have cops that were through the training pipeline, that were ready to be deployed on the street until some craziness happened. Right now, we're not there. Our plan is to have us back there in six months. But the best part of your question for me is, what are we doing to entice those individuals that can retire? Because a significant portion of our workforce can retire because of the hiring back in the early 2000s. And that's something that we're working on. And actually, and I don't think this is the appropriate time to share it, but I, I have been in conversations with Ms. Terry Overby and Candace with OMB, and we're talking about strategies, not just on a PD perspective, but strategies on a city perspective, to identify, retain, and incentivize those, you know, high-performing quality individuals that we have in our city. So it's a, it's quite a plan. I've met with Mr. Kennington, Mr. Palmbea pitched some really crazy ideas that I haven't spoke to Mr. Brady about, about how.
I'm always the last one to know.
It's good that your staff is actually.
No, I know.
So they don't just have to talk to them all the time. But.
Thanks, Dan.
Some, some, some ideas that what we can do with PD. Chief Koss and I have also met with Glenn Pearson, our MPA president, and talked about ideas with him. So we're actively seeking out what best ideas that we can come forward with to ask Mr. Brady if he agrees with our, our really cool ideas.
No pressure.
And to see if we can get some of those implemented to, to attack that, because it, it is an issue.
Now, Dan, we have done the incentive for their recruits.
That's correct.
So let's talk, let's remind the council about that.
Yeah. So to, and I actually have a meeting with Mr. Brady, and Mr. Chief Koss and I have a meeting in a couple of weeks to talk about how we can expand upon that. But if you look at social media, you see that every agency in the, in the Phoenix metro area, and some outside the Phoenix metro area are offering $10,000 bonuses, $7,000 bonuses for new recruits to come on. Ironically, for us, we looked at that for a while, and we're like, hmm, we don't have the need to do that just yet, until we started seeing a slight dip in our recruiting numbers. And with Mr. Palmbea, Mr. Brady's support, we have a $3,500 incentive that all of our new hires, once they hit the academy, they hit 30 days into the academy, they get half of that. And then the second portion is when they complete the field training program. And we're hoping to expand upon that.
Could we talk about recruitment for just a tad? Because it does seem like for the last year or so, I've thought, you know, Phoenix is hiring like crazy in their police department, I know. And, and so it seems like we were competing, you know, with other agencies, and, and we were struggling with every industry on the planet right now for workforce. I mean, where are we at right now? If, if people are at home watching on Channel 11, and they know someone, you know, a young person who is like, you know, possibly considering a career in public service, are we hiring? What's our pitch at this point?
Yeah, we absolutely are hiring. We continue to hire. We have monthly tests for new recruits. We've streamlined and evaluated our process. If someone were to test with another agency, they're looking at two or three months before they find out if they have a position. We're at 28 days. That's how fast our process goes. Without, I mean, we haven't alleviated any of our standards or strictness in our process. We've just gotten so efficient in our process. So you'll know quicker with Mesa. Our starting pay for police officer minus the bonuses, better than just about everybody in the entire state. So we pay our police officer recruits extremely well. We have the best training, not only in our police academy, because we currently have the longest academy. We continue to add innovative training techniques and styles into our academy to make, you know, with outcomes that will make our community safer, that will make our officers safer out in the field. We have a comprehensive, community-based field training program that we've adapted many, many times over the last four years to make it more contemporary. And then, we train our officers about five times more than the, the standard, once they're through our entire training program. So we're in, we're an incredibly well-trained and educated police force with opportunities to transfer to all of our specialty units and/or due promotions.
I'm anxious for Cory to answer the same question, but before we do that, how much longer are we going to be doing the three academy a year scenario? Is that?
Right now, my projections show it at least at four years because of the number of people that we have in drop that we know are going to be leaving. So it's something that's going to be with us for a while. So, you know, if you want to get hired as a police officer, and, you know, you're 18 years old right now, and you got to wait till you're 20, 21, 21 years old, you can, you can, you can wait, and we'll be running three academies for the, for a long time.
Cory, what about fire?
Mayor, Council. For us, it's, our recruitment goes very well. Obviously, you're aware that we, we generally only test once every other year for the sworn side of the fire department. We've been around that 1,000 applicant number for quite a while, 1,000 to 1,200 applicants for what for us has been a lot of growth. We've been doing back-to-back academies in Mesa for at least three years, three, three and a half years. It's been constant, the, the wear and tear on our training division, our training staff has been a lot. It's normally within the fire department, we would do one academy a year, and sometimes had off-years where we didn't have an academy at all. So back-to-back academies for us, two, two academies a year, with our, with our partners in blue, doing three academies a year has, has certainly been impactful on our training division. Same thing, though, on the, the ambulance transport side. There is a lot of opportunity for us. We are hiring, we, we generally open our, our process at least twice a year for EMTs and paramedics, twice a year external, and then twice a year internal for paramedics who have, EMTs who have, have gone to medic school and then would like to transition to a paramedic position. So there's a lot of opportunity. We've, we've talked to HR about making our, our EMT and paramedic positions open the way that PD does, so that it's just always an open position. We certainly see opportunities for our civilian ambulance personnel who are often looking to further their career on the sworn fire side. And anybody out there that's looking, I think we, our intention is to do a fire recruit testing in January. Chief Dunn's been working diligently with, with Terry Overby and her team in HR to get that put together. And we expect that we'll be hiring another, what we're expecting to be a two-year list in January. So anybody that's interested.
And then, yes, Mayor, all other positions in the city, we were, we're still looking for, because we have positions to fill in almost every department. So, and we are getting good responses, but just like police and fire, we have retirements, and people move on. And, but we've been pretty successful, but we still have, you know, especially some of our equipment operators, you can see that huge demand across the country as far as logistics and live products aren't moving across. So, you know, we think about that, that's a, that's a garbage truck driver, right? And so we're in a lot of competition with a lot of the private sector, too. But, so we're down in some areas, and so we're always recruiting and looking for good people to come join us. More sooner, yes.
Mr. Haredia?
On the EMT side, Chief Haze, is that a different training timeline that you look at from the sworn, right? What's that training look like?
It is, Mayor, Councilmember Haredia. It, our training for our civilian paramedics and EMTs, obviously, we hire them as an EMT, or we hire them as a paramedic. We do about a one-month training. Some of the paramedics, we have to do some additional EMS training to cross them over to some of the higher level of care that, that, that the Mesa Fire Medical Department delivers than, than some other agencies. So that one month includes some significant driver operator training. It includes quite a bit of EMS training, and then our systems training, you know, our EPCR's and the, the equipment that we use to provide our care. And then a city of Mesa, you know, coming onboard training. So when you compare to four months of training for our fire recruit, this, this month, three and a half weeks for our EMTs and paramedics is, is quite a bit faster, puts them on the street and, and doing their job, what we're hiring them for.
Internally, as far as the, the training that we do.
Yes, sir.
In-house, right?
Yep. We're doing that with staff that I think Mr. Brady and, and Sam were discussing. Some of those peripheral positions that we've hired tied to the transport program, their role and function is to deliver, you know, hire those folks on, get, get them trained, and then some supervision of them. Yes, sir.
Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Haze, I have two questions. One is, talk about the innovative programs we're doing in terms of trying to recruit non-public safety personnel. The other one is, we recently gave a, we donated a pumper truck to EVIT. And how are we working with some of our, our, our educational institutions like Mesa Community College, EVIT, and, and those programs?
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Luna. Yeah. First, and I need to thank everybody here for that donation to EVIT. We, we kind of, I, I sit on the board for the fire science program at EVIT, and they had asked, you know, whether there was a possibility. I think all of you got to see the truck, the trucks that they had been using, and what we were able to provide for them was a significant upgrade. So I believe that somebody had reached out to the mayor, actually, and had asked for that. And, and obviously, once we get council support on being able to make a donation like that, we jump on it. And it's, getting to see the way that those kids have responded to that, that apparatus is exceptional. We continue to partner, because that's where we see a lot of our recruitment coming from, is, is those programs. We have got several EMTs that, that came out of the EVIT program. We've got several firefighters that, that came out of our EVIT program. So it is an exceptional program for East Valley kids that might have an interest in, in something outside of, you know, being an English teacher or being an accountant. It really gives them an opportunity to, to, to put their fingers in a lot of different areas and decide what, where their interests are. And it's been an exceptional program for us for, for recruiting out of there. Some of the other positions that I think Mr. Brady was discussing have, have tied to some of the outside things that the, the fire department has been doing outside of sworn. We've made a significant commitment in our social services program with our. We've made a significant commitment in our social services program with our master's in social work, which is allowing us to bring in quite a few interns out of ASU that, if you're in the social work program, as much as, you know, we talk about in the fire department how committed these young people are, because the hours that have to be put in, in an internship capacity to be a social worker, and I'm pretty sure we all know, social workers don't make much money, so they are truly committed with passion to doing the good work that social work does. They have to put in somewhere between 1,500, depending on if they're master students, bachelor students. We are seeing a significant benefit to our community by having this master's in social work position. They can intern in our program and deliver those hours and truly make an impact to our community.
And Mayor and council, as you've noted, this recruitment issue is citywide. Probably the number one question I get from employees when I go out to speak with them is, we have these positions, what are you doing to fill the positions? What are we doing different? Apart from making sure our starting wages are more than competitive, we are doing not only innovative things in recruiting and making sure we're reaching out through social media in every way possible, but we're also trying to reestablish some old friendships. So for example, some of you may remember the COE program that we had with Mesa Public Schools, where senior could work half-time with the city and then maybe get a job. And those are the type of people who would get to 30 years of service and only be 48 and had to wait two more years to retire. All right, that's misty for all of you who remember. Misty. So we're looking at that program again, because we want to get employees in as soon as we possibly can, because we're struggling and competing. We're also talking, I just spoke yesterday with Benedictine, about setting up internships with them so that we can introduce their students to all the other opportunities we have within the city and get them interested sooner. So we're trying to mirror your support of education and bring those people to the city as quickly as we can, so that we're developing pipelines that either existed in the past or are new pipelines. Because the number one struggle we have is bringing, is the market to compete for employees. And keeping them here isn't as big a problem in other non-public safety as it is getting them in the door. So we're trying to find new relationships, whether it's with community groups or educational institutions, to get a pipeline into the city, because we believe, the number one way we get people, I just spoke to someone yesterday, is his father works in water and now he works in solid waste. And I said, he must have had a good experience if he wants his son to work here, and he said, oh, yes. And the whole family was excited. So we do everything we can to bridge that gap, because it is our number one struggle within HR is getting people in the door.
I thought I should add one other thing. We did get a recruitment position back within the fire department as well. That was, it was cut, I believe, during the economic downturn in the 2008, 2007, 2008 timeframe, and that position was added back just this past year. It has really given the fire department the ability to get out and actively recruit in an arena that we've been missing for the last several years, just because of capacity of workload. So that is, I think it's one of the positions that's in Sam's slide that was added back for us as well.
Sir Thompson.
Chief Butler, so one of the things that, when I look at the full-time employees, and hopefully I'm not jumping too far ahead, like fire medical, right, you have the fire piece, you have the medical piece, so they're two separate, same entity, two separate functions, right? With PD, you know, a lot of times we talk about, we talk about the number of employees and a lot of that focuses on patrol, but how are we doing in our specialty units like heat and gangs and some of the other areas that are extremely important to keeping our community safe? Are we, are we stable in those? Are we pulling people out to put them on the street because we're down in patrol? I mean, what are, how are we, how are we doing with the rest of our specialty units?
So in those specialty units, those generally tend to be our senior officers, and that's where, you know, officers will retire out of. So the gang units, heat, that type of stuff, there's always vacancies. It's going to be a cycle. When there's a vacancy, when we can from patrol, because we're short 41 in patrol right now, we would fill those positions from patrol, because patrol's, you know, it's really our, I mean, it's the backbone of our organization, but it's also where police officers learn to be police officers. So I believe we're in all of the other vacancies outside of patrol. I think we have right around 20 vacant positions, including a couple of supervisory positions that need to be filled. But we have been in active conversations about filling those positions as these officers start rolling in from our training pipeline. So it is, it is a constant that we need to address.
Yes.
I had a question on the hiring. I know we're going into this in quite a lot of detail, but I know hiring, having a diverse force or staffing has always been a challenge. Are we making progress on that, or is it continuing to be a struggle, especially given that it's difficult to find people to apply?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, from the police department perspective, I know I've had a conversation with most of you in here, talking about what we've done historically with diversity hires inside of our organization. In 2014, we started a program, it's called the Community Engagement Hiring Initiative. We completely revolutionized our hiring process at the time and how we did business, broke down some barriers, and since that time, our average hires are women and minority candidates at the 50 percentile, which in most cases, in some classes meets, but in other classes exceeds our class-by-class diversity breakdown. One of the things that we have recently done is pledged to participate in the 30 by 30 initiative, which is run out of our hiring and recruiting area. 30 by 30 is a partnership with New York University to increase the number of women in law enforcement to 30 percentile by the year 2030. Now, the challenge is attracting women to law enforcement, because nationally, the average number of women is 11%. We hover right around 14% in Mesa, so it's an area that we've identified as where we can grow significantly. So it is on the fore of our mind at all times, and it's something that we've had some really nice success with, but the success is never done. We're going to continue to push forward like we do at the Mesa Police Department and get better day by day.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, or Vice Mayor Duff, apologize. Yeah, recruitment is a priority for us, and recruiting diverse candidates that better reflect our community, the community that we are serving and protecting is critical. We are certainly not where we want to be, but I would say over the last two years, we've seen some significant improvement in our numbers coming out of our recruit academy. Obviously, our female recruitment is probably one, is in the lower tier. We are not too far off of the average, though. You know, unfortunately, the national average is only about 5 or 6% female in the fire service, and that's right around where we're at. That's a lofty goal that Chief Butler has, and certainly the fire department would love to see something like that. But really, we're talking about diversity across our entire workforce. We have seen some significant improvement. I think that that's been a high priority for Chief Camilli and for Chief Dunn, who runs our HR division and is over the recruitment side of it. We have seen some of our better numbers over the last two years of recruit academies, which is four academies, that that number is continuing to improve. And we feel like that this recruitment captain helps us to better reach out across the spectrum to be able to open up opportunities. Unfortunately, what we see is our minority communities don't really have a connection to public safety. I can talk for myself, I didn't know anything about the fire service as a kid. I didn't have any family members on the job. I didn't know anything, it never crossed my mind. It was not anything that I ever thought I'd be interested in, and luckily, I took an EMT class with a guy I was playing volleyball with. That's the only reason I'm in the fire service today, is some guy who worked here at Mesa said, hey, you know, you should take my EMT class. If it's not brought to you at some point in your life in those early years, it's just not something that you think about, and I think especially, I think, with the fire service. That's why we see some huge, huge benefit to these relationships we have with programs like EVIT, that a lot of times, these are kids who don't have any connection to what we do. We have to get out there and develop it. We've been able to do some really awesome things with our cadet program within the fire department, and we've expanded that program that five years ago was maybe 16 or 17 kids, and 15 of them were family members of somebody on the job. And now, we focus our recruitment in some of our lower-income areas in the city. We are trying to get young men and women who never thought of the fire service as a career. Now, some of you have been at some of our cadet graduations and some of our programs. We don't focus on trying to make them a police officer or firefighter. We focus on trying to make them good, strong, wonderful individuals that go into their village, we talk about a lot, be an impact to your village, be something that brings something to your community, whatever that is. But we are certainly seeing that a lot of them get an opportunity to just get a flavor for what the fire service can be, and the ability to be able to give back to your community and feel like that when you went home from work the next day, you made a difference. We're seeing kids go, I never thought of the fire service, I never thought of the police department, I never thought of public safety, but now I have a passion for it. So that's where we're kind of trying to focus that and make sure that we're meeting the diverse needs of our community and reflecting that in our workforce.
I appreciate your work on this, and I know it's been a priority for you. And I believe in the fire department, you still have the Aspire Academy for girls to get involved and...
We just had the Aspire Academy, Vice Mayor Duff, yeah. We just had our Aspire Academy last weekend. A big turnout of our female firefighters were there, Chief Camilli was there. Obviously, this has been a passion program for her. It is focused, and it's a partnership with the Girl Scouts. This year, we transitioned it for the first time away from the Mesa Training Facility. Obviously, we have a lot of projects going on out there, and we're able to get some partnership with Gilbert, or the Glendale Public Safety Training Facility out on the west side of town, which engaged a lot of our west-side agencies and their participation as well. But it's been a very, very good program to get young ladies an opportunity to see something that they may have never thought of as a career path.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation? We could end on a high note, that was a great commercial.
Just a couple more slides.
Okay, please, yeah. Please continue.
So to go back to public safety sales tax, similar to the fireside, this is just a highlight of what the city has implemented so far through fiscal year '21, '22. One of the big notes on there is the patrol operations. We've had 36 FTEs that are directly supporting patrol, but the other big thing on there is the 22 FTEs of the patrol support, which then frees up additional officer time that would then be used on the streets. And one of the big things, as we talked about the training here, what's made this possible has been the more academies, but also with the police department, these positions, and looking back onto the acceleration, these positions are reviewed on an annual basis and throughout the year to then understand what's best for the community's needs and how can the police department, the police department be the most flexible it can be to then meet those needs in ever-changing environment. So because of that, this is where we, this is how we have been able to bring on those and accelerate those positions and kind of move those more academies forward, so, and then also support the types of training, as Chief Butler talked about. One of the things that we've added into here is advanced training squad, which directly supports staff today on kind of moving forward with the training that they need to be successful. So with the police department and the public safety sales tax, we're also looking at, into the forecast as well. As you know, we're already doing three academies today, so we're trying to bring on as many officers as possible. But with the forecast of that 117 that we hope to bring on come '24, '25, we're looking at additional patrol operation or patrol, patrol positions as well as support, and then also to supplement the northeast publics, public safety station that will be coming on in '23, '24. And then additionally, as you've heard this year, we talked about the real-time crime center. With bringing that up, we will also be including and adding additional positions to support that and bring that new program up. So what you see here is a chart of the five-year trend as well for police funding. As a reminder, this includes all funding, not just the police department. This will also include projects and everything else going on for the city. So the big thing when we look at '21, '22 and the bonds, as you're aware, we're bringing on the evidence facility that was part of the bonds as well as the microgrid. So this is kind of a snapshot of each of those budgets over the past five-year forecast.
Yes, Ms. Pillsbury.
So we, earlier in the year when we had talked about a new model using mental health navigators and stuff like that, is all of those positions are contracted out? None of those are these positions at all? We don't hire those in-house?
The Solari group, yeah.
Correct, so the Solari is a contract that's in the police budget, but it is not additional FTE.
Okay, so none of this is any of that support for the mental health side?
So with that contract, it was not part of the adopted budget in the original plan. That was something, once the contract was finalized, then we adjusted their budget, but it would be part of their actual departmental budget. So in the forecast, it would be, it would be in there.
It's going to be funded in the general fund?
Yep.
But there's no additional positions that are associated with that on our authorization?
Okay, and have we been using those navigators since that?
Yeah. What's the status of the...
Just curious, or maybe you're going to come back and give us a report on that? That's a big issue for people, right? Like, they want to make sure we're taking care of mental health as well, so.
So currently, what we...
Do you want a chair?
I'm not even going to borrow a chair, because we own back with too much effort.
Your chair's coming towards you.
Currently, the number one thing we're doing is still working with dispatch, and we have someone from Solari placed in dispatch to make sure we are triaging the proper calls. We are currently looking at the money that we, I think we talked to you about, 2.5 million that we have through the, I can't think of the acronym, ARPA funds, to look at putting teams in the field. And we're currently looking, working with Solari, some other agencies, and our own public safety agencies to figure out the best way to create those teams to have a direct response in the field. But right now, none of our positions are paid for out of this type of money, but they are being used. And we've seen our numbers in terms of triage calls go up five times over on the police side. And it's still a very small number, but we are looking at great advances, and we will come back to you multiple times, I'm sure, to give you an update on that. Because mental health is obviously a huge issue that we're dealing with across our, both organizations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Brady, we talked about an additional potential bond question a year or two from now for the fire stations. Is there, and it sounds, we already have addressed a lot of the capital needs in the police department, it sounds like, with the new evidence building and so on. Do you see a need for additional bonding tied to...
You know, Mayor, I think we're still evaluating all that, but we've had some discussions, and we really do, our police headquarters building really is coming to a critical point. We're going through an evaluation process right now of the work that needs to be done. And we do feel like that because of really the, renovation's probably not even the right word, it's not a total reconstruction, but there's significant modernization of that facility that would probably, maybe something we'd want to consider in a future bond program. And as well, at the same time, you know, behind completing that facility for police, we probably need to look at also doing something on the fireside. Both those facilities haven't been touched in decades and, or at least significantly. But, so it's something we do need to consider. That support behind the frontline fire stations and substations is very critical, too. And so it's something that we'll want to bring back to council in a future discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
So Sam, based on your comments, go back to that slide. So the '21, '22 budget for police is 254 million, and then the '21, '22 budget for fire and medical is 142. Am I, combined those two together is 396 plus?
And this is not just the police department and the fire department's budget, it does also include the project, project management budgets and so forth. So it's a mixture of kind of public safety support. But yes, you are correct, from a total public safety support, that would be what we would be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say, if, when you start trying to identify public safety commitment to the city, I think you have to, we always have to remember, we always include not only fire, medical, police, but we also include the courts, because you cannot, you need to have a judicial system in order to support the public safety side. So when you see a slide that says, what is the city's commitment to public safety? We will, you'll see that there may be a little bit difference. I just want to let council know, we would include the judicial side also, but...
Does this include the judicial side?
No, it doesn't. That's what I'm suggesting, so.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So when I'm looking at the five-year trend of fire, and I think that average annual growth was about 15%, and police is at 7%, I assume, and I was just like, don't bring it up. Don't bring it up.
Well, remember, one of the things we...
You know, our ambulance program, the hassle costs.
Yeah, so there's some things we've done on the fire, we've brought, and that was a big, you saw that was a big step, right? Is, and it continues, right, is our commitment to the ambulance program. So where those services were being provided by a private enterprise, they, over time, and Cory's been working with them, that, their availability has kind of been...
Hasn't mattered... Hasn't met our community's needs.
Yeah, so we've been back, we've been supplementing that and actually serving areas that they just really couldn't get to very well. And so that's necessitated a lot of the, well, it's certainly some of the big growth you see here. But also, just for, also, when you see the fire medical, and you'll see these commitments that we've made, really a big time on the medical side. And you, we, there was a variety of different descriptions of different units that are on that side. You know, when we see fire medical, that fire truck is oftentimes a medical provider. And so we're trying to do everything we can, the chief, and working with our firefighters and our data scientists, to make sure we, we're kind of integrating these direct medical response units inside the system so we can try to keep those fire units closer into the area that they're intended to serve. And I think that's been a big shift over the last five years, or I don't know if it's a shift, but a emphasis over the last five years that I think is, is, shows the commitment of the city to help the fire service by taking over a lot of the medical services and direct services that we've seen, so.
And particularly, a big shift from 2021 to 21, '22 budget, from on the fire versus PD, just looking at
Right, and you're just
75% versus a 30% increase in
You're seeing, that's when we started bringing on the, you know, the cost of the amb, the actual physical, you know, the ambulance, we purchased, what, Louie could go six?
Five additional
Five additional ambulances. We've been adding quite a few of those over the last year.
Okay, okay.
Vice Mayor, we'll add, there's been other things, not just transportation, but obviously transportation was a large undertaking for us that did have a significant impact to see that, that type of growth over by my friend in PD.
Fire stations, we've had
Fire stations. We've also done quite, there's been, the city's supported with quite a few projects specific to fire growth out at our training division. And that was one of the things that we had talked about. We have several construction projects going on right now out at our public safety training facility that were, you know, it's just the wear and tear that comes on a, on a training facility, well beyond, I think you guys have seen some of the news stories and coverage on the track, which is a joint use. But we've got our burn building is back under, is under construction. We've got a remodel of our locker rooms that, that needed a remodel, that is a large construction project. We've got a remodel going on of some EMS classrooms out at our training that, we're talking upwards of $7.5 million worth of projects going on just out at our training division, and the majority of those are specific to fire. So that's part of that.
Thank you. I didn't mean to
Yeah, we were hoping to avoid the question.
Create any rivalry there, get like, who gets the most money, some PD's of larger portions of public safety. Anyway, we'll just cut it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll just cut it at that.
No, I think one thing to note on that, PD has done a great job with, as you can see with their budget, because some of the lower increase on it has been some of the work that they have done, whether it's with the civilianization that they did back in 18, 19, 17, 18, and that work, as well as the, there has been some
That's a great point, Sam, yeah. So we've been able to, we see that civilianization, the civilians coming on, they're doing the crime scene analysis. That is freeing up tremendous amount of patrol officers to go back to do their job. So, and we can do that, obviously, at a lesser cost than the patrol officer, but we get some very bright civilians coming and working in the police department, so.
All right.
Great. So just to close out, we have a couple highlight tabs of what the one-time projects are that we have in the public safety sales tax. So what we've implemented so far through the fiscal year 21, '22 budget, for PD, we've implemented $450,000 in replacements of dispatch stations, renovations to the drive track, as we discussed, in coordination with fire, as well as additional vehicles for all, vehicles and radios for all those new positions that we've been bringing on. On the fireside, one of the big things that we put into and implement was the replacement of the portable radios, as well as a new engine for the training and weekend response unit, and some focus on cancer abatement and other training and development opportunities. In the forecast, what we're looking, this fiscal year and moving forward, we are doing additional support with the Recruit Academy, as we have already discussed, additional funding to supplement the bond for the evidence facility, and that's going to be overages on the project as contingencies, as well as also the purchasing of bins and FFNE for that facility. And then on the fireside, we're looking at that support for academies. So fire at the moment is doing one academy for this year that Public Safety Sales Tax is supporting, as well as the remodel of the volunteer center to house Battalion 204, and then the training facility, as Cory talked about.
That's it, Mayor. So thanks to Sam and Police and Fire for helping us put this together. So we just wanted to demonstrate the kind of, you know, the update we owed to council. We appreciate the opportunity to update you on where the public safety sales tax is. I won't use my more sooner analogy, but certainly, there's a lot more of it, and it's come at a much faster pace than we had originally talked. But the economy has done much better, and to the benefit. It allows us to bring more positions on and a certainly a lot more equipment. But at the same time, I want to emphasize that while that's been going on, the general fund has continued to provide significant support to public safety along the way, and you can see that in the additional numbers. And then I think what it sets us up for is a future conversation that we need to have about how do we support, maybe with some capital projects, the, this growth, this opportunity that's coming out of the sales tax, whether it's in fire stations or police and fire facilities, it's something we'd like to continue having a conversation with council over the next couple of months.
Great. Mr. Thompson.
I'd just like to say thanks to you guys for putting this together. It's important that we continue to update the citizens. You know, they're the, you know, we have to be transparent, because they're the ones we asked for help, and they're the ones that voted to implement a self-imposed, really a sales tax to support public safety. So we need to make sure we're upholding our part of the bargain. But I want to thank you guys for keeping track of all this and providing these numbers, because, you know, it's been a couple of years, and it's like, where are we at and what's going on? So thank you for all your effort and your work.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you, my colleague to my left. I agree with that. I think it really illustrates our commitment to our public safety here in the city of Mesa. And we've gone beyond that. And thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you, Mr. Brady, for leading this team. The additional staff is certainly going to be a benefit to our community. We continue to grow as a city. The public safety sales tax certainly impacted what we're going to be doing in the future, but these additional funds, as well as personnel, is certainly going to meet the needs as we continue to grow. So thank you for your hard work as we move forward, and the future is very bright for the city of Mesa in terms of public safety. Thank you.
By local.
By local.
Ditto.
Thank you. Anyone else? This reminds me of our Monday night council meeting, where we were commenting on the irony of having received all of these national awards for economic development, and how, you know, a year and a half ago, we were scared to death that our economy was going to tank as a result of the pandemic, and how fortunate we are that that's not what happened. And, and so growth and economic growth and the success of sales tax, you know, boy, knock on wood, that's great. So I, for one, will speak out and say, we have to stay ahead of our growth. And so I am supportive of seriously looking at a bond election again at our next election, so that we have a place to put, you know, all these great people that we're onboarding in our public safety departments. So I look forward to having that discussion when the time is right. All right. Thank you very much. Great, great job. The next item on our agenda is item two, acknowledged receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion of that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item is current event summaries and reports on meetings and conferences attended. If you don't mind, I'm going to take the liberty now of welcoming a delegation that we have, that's been in place in our council meeting this morning. Welcome, we have, we are celebrating tonight the 40th anniversary of the Mesa Sister Cities Program. And chief among our sister cities is Wyomus, Mexico, Wyomus Sonora, Mexico. And we are very privileged to have a delegation today visiting from Wyomus. We're very privileged to have the newly elected mayor of Wyomus. Madam Mayor, welcome so much. This is Carla Cordova Gonzalez. She's accompanied in the delegation with her son Pablo Cordova, but also Carlos Ricardo Molina Ibrich, who is the real estate development director, Jorge de la Jesús Medina de Zoraga, I apologize for my butchering of your name, the Wyomus Economic Development Director and Office of Tourism, and Aldo Pedia, who's the government liaison for the city councils of Mexico. So, welcome. Good to have you with us today.
Thank you.
Please tell us, give us some observations and tell us a little bit about Wyomus.
Okay, muy buen día. Muchas gracias por la invitación. I'm not speaking English, but aquí estamos.
That's okay.
Bueno, nosotros tenemos algunos proyectos. Primeramente, les queremos dar las gracias por permitirnos estar aquí con ustedes, por extender lazos. También queremos decirles que queremos trabajar articulados fuertemente.
Mayor Cordoba expresses her gratitude towards the city of Mesa for your outstanding hospitality, first and foremost. And on behalf of the city of Wyomus, they expressed enormous interest in engaging in several collaborations that entail economic development and touristic promotion, among other things. Now, she may continue.
Nosotros tenemos áreas de oportunidad o nuestras áreas débiles. Fue muy interesante estar escuchando el tema de la Corporación Policíaca. Estamos trabajando todos los días en una mesa de seguridad porque para la construcción de la paz y queremos nosotros que nos apoyen en el tema de la policía turística y la policía comunitaria.
One of the main areas that were, that caught the interest of Mayor Cordoba was the, how well-structured the police department, the Department of Public Safety is established in here, which is, may say, one of the weaknesses that the city of Wyomus is working constantly, every day, particularly forming a committee of, an additional committee of public safety that specializes and also in touristic safety, that makes, that makes sure that our visitors from everyone in the world, particularly in the United States, which is approximately 70%, can feel 100% safe. And the city of Wyomus asks for, the city of Mesa, for more mutual collaboration in such affairs.
También es muy importante para nosotros evaluar el tema de una, de un vuelo que sea Wyomus Mesa, un vuelo de avión para los turistas. Estamos nosotros por construir en Wyomus un hospital de la Clínica San José con especialidades, y eso va por fortalecer el turismo médico. De igual forma, también estamos trabajando en un proyecto de casas de retiro en San Carlos Nuevo Wyomus, que es un paraíso. Y sobre todo, nos gustaría que ustedes nos expresen cómo podríamos nosotros refrendar la hermandad en un apoyo interinstitucional con universidades, para que pudieran venir acá algunas universidades a aprender los procesos que ustedes ya tienen bien establecidos, y de igualmente, que ustedes en temas de evaluación nos ayuden a encontrar las áreas de oportunidad en todos los procesos, tanto en los servicios públicos como en los comunitarios. Uno de los indicadores más complicados es la desertión escolar en Wyomus. Entonces, estamos nosotros siempre en las universidades tratando de mantener a todos los jóvenes, pero hay mucha desertión después de la preparatoria.
Also, one of the main, main areas of interest that the city of Wyomus is, wants to endeavor on, is to explore the opportunity of a connecting flight from Wyomus to the city of Mesa via the Mesa Gateway Airport, through whichever airline comes in play, in order to incentivize the, to elevate the tourism that the city of Wyomus and the Port of San Carlos can offer, particularly with the building of a new hospital from the San Jose Clinic, which is one of the most, one of the most recognized clinics in the country of Mexico. Furthermore, we also want to, we're also looking to strengthen the relationship between both cities through, through the integration of academic entities and establish further collaboration on both sides, in order to counter the, one of the weakness that is, that is educational desertion, a lot, which is a high, which results in a high dropout rate on a lot of students during high school or right after high school, that don't, do not continue their secondary studies. And it is something that we are, that we are looking to counter as well. And that would help to have Mexican universities learn how American universities operate in a way that are able to incentivize the young generations to continue their path towards professionalism.
Bien pues, y por último, tenemos nosotros una gran fiesta que es el Carnaval Internacional, el cual también tiene muchas áreas de oportunidad y como siempre, están invitados. Queremos trabajar en algo diferente con mucha seguridad. Y sobre todo, queremos mostrar la mejor cara de Wyomus. Sabemos que tenemos muchas, muchas debilidades, pero vamos a trabajar y vamos a poner muy fuerte a trabajar nuestras fortalezas. Gracias.
And we also want to bring into, bring into the table the, one thing that represents the city of Wyomus at its finest, which is the International Carnival that they make every, every year around the time of March. We want to do something different, want also like, want to establish the importance of safety there and bring out the best face that Wyomus can and will, and will always offer from here on out.
Muchas gracias de parte del Concilio de Ciudad de Mesa. Estamos muy agradecidos por su presencia aquí, aquí en la Ciudad de Mesa. Sabemos que ustedes tienen una agenda bastante pesada, empezando hoy y con la cena que vamos a, que se va a llevar a cabo esta noche. Pero muchas gracias por su presencia, por estar aquí presente con nosotros. De parte del alcalde ya, él está muy agradecido. Entonces, nos vamos a ver más tarde, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Sí, sí. Muchas gracias por su presencia.
Gracias.
Thank you. We look, thank you. We look forward to working, visiting with you over the next few days that you're in Mesa, and particularly tonight at the reception. And again, we really value our longstanding relationship with the city of Wyomus and look forward to that being even stronger.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We would like to request a break for pictures.
Yes, we're about to conclude this meeting, and as soon as we do that, let's have some photographs.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. We'll look forward to chatting in just a minute. Council, I know you've been busy this week, meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Luna?
Yesterday, we convened a meeting with the Red Mountain, the Mesa Community College campus, and we had a robust, robust conversation with many business leaders and community leaders. And we look forward as the college continues to grow. And November 2nd, they are celebrating their 20th anniversary, so I would invite the public to attend. But please don't forget this weekend, Dia de los Muertos celebration at the Mesa Arts Center. It's going to be a phenomenal celebration. There'll be a lot of festivities, and there are altars throughout, altares o ofrendas throughout the city of Mesa. And so we would encourage you to all visit those, and it's part of the celebration of the Hispanic culture.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, we have our cemetery tour coming up this Saturday from 10:00 AM till noon, and I'm speaking, as well as the vice mayor. She gets to speak about, and I'm going to say it, my grandmother, great-grandmother, and I get to speak about Powder River Jack. Some old cowboy here in Mesa, so I don't know why that happened. No, not Waylon. We could talk about Waylon Jennings. He's right there.
Well, they asked us to dress in the period dress, and I said, well, you could dress as your grandmother, and I'll dress as a cowboy. But he decided, he'll keep the cowboy stint.
Well, what goes around, comes around. And then also got to attend, with several of us, the PD promotional ceremony yesterday at Public Safety Facility. Mayor, you can elaborate on that. Thanks.
Thank you. I will. I'll be at the, at the I'll be at the, at the cemetery as well, not just because I want to see what Mr. Freeman looks like in a cowboy hat. But I'll be talking about the, the Palmeroy family, family and their contributions, so. Mr. Freeman brought up the public, the police department award ceremony that many of us attended. That was, that was a very touching ceremony. We, we highlighted some really heroic events that the police department had been involved in, and also some, some terrible events that the police department was, was forced to deal with over the last, you know, during the pandemic. So very poignant meeting, a great reminder, much like today, of, of the importance of our police department in our community, public safety departments. So thanks again to those brave individuals that worked, have worked so tirelessly and that we were able to, to honor a couple of days ago. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, we had a coffee with a cop in the district the other day, and a lot of fun, thanks to Commander Spicer and Lieutenant Lindato and the officers that came out to support Coffee with a Cop. It was a lot of fun working behind the counter, not really. Making caramel frappuccinos. Quite exciting. So hopefully, you know, none of the citizens got food poisoning or anything from, from my concoctions, but it was a lot of fun, so thank you.
Ms. Pillsbury.
So Tuesday, we had our Love Your City kickoff, volunteer recruitment event. And that was, I just, I'm so always impressed with the neighborhood and community services and how much they do to provide opportunities for our citizens to volunteer. And we, we know our city is based on our volunteer work. So many good things are happening around the city. And that was a kickoff to this Saturday morning is the Love Your City Service Project events that will be happening all over the city. Every single district has service projects. So if you want to be involved, it's, it's super easy to find out what those projects are. And I will be attending some of those Saturday morning as well. And then Tuesday night, Mesa Chamber hosted their Taste of Mesa event at the Idea Museum. They do that monthly with Chamber and BBQ. If you haven't tried it, fabulous barbecue restaurant on Stapley and the 60 provided the food for that event, and it was just a really nice evening. Several of us were there, getting to meet businesses and Chamber members. And so thanks to the Idea Museum for hosting that.
I'd like to add that yesterday, I received an award from LISC Phoenix as a 2021 exemplary advocate. And I just want to take this opportunity in receiving the award on behalf of the critical work that the city has done through the pandemic, especially with the CARES dollars. It is, speaks well for what we have done and how we have served our communities, especially in the underserved communities. Economics Development Gold Award for Economic Inclusion and Equity was significant, I think, in the recognition of the award. So I wanted to share that for all the work that is done by my fellow council members, the city manager, the management and staff, and making Mesa a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations on that award, well deserved. Anything else, counsel, before we, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, just a reminder, we do have a special council meeting next Thursday also. It will be an item regarding the Legacy Sports Complex. We have a development agreement with them. We need to accelerate some projects that were not contemplated before. They've been very successful in booking a lot of events out there. It will have no financial, additional financial impact on the city. We're just adding some additional projects to help open up some roads sooner. There's that word again, than we had in the original agreement. But we need to act soon, because ADOT needs a commitment from the city before the end of the month. So that will be a special council meeting on Thursday, and then will be followed by the study session after that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Second to my Mr. Thompson, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.